Can everybody please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Board Secretary, this meeting has been approved as an advertising point to open the meeting act.
Yes, it has, Mr. McEnroe.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bautista.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Vichard.
Here.
Mr. Brudinsky.
Here.
Mr. Syaak.
Here.
Mrs. DeBento.
Here.
Mrs. Riquilla.
Here.
Mrs. Kraft.
Yes.
And Mr. McEnroe. This evening for the executive session, the board discussed on their attorney-client privileges, S E A grievances, a Wilson School electrical contractor, architect, decara rubino, on the personnel, S E A members, on the negotiation, Savile Principal's associations, contract renewal.
Thank you. Dr. Afan, we have some presentations this evening.
Would you like to come up with some action? We're going to start off this evening with the perfect attendance awards. There's about twenty people. When you hear your name, please come out. Mr. McEnroe, would you like to read the names?
They're fairly simple.
Yeah. I don't want them to talk. One year perfect attendance is Mr. Agolase, Edward Agolase. And these are all one year, there's about eight people. Linda Brown. Donna Evigan, E S P, she's a classmate. Donna, you're the award.
McDonald's getting double-headed today. Congratulations, Doc.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Kelly O'Neal, Fleischner. Pat C. Palm. I had the mic today. Good job.
Mr. Palm, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Heather Tompkins, Tompkins Posse.
Is she here?
And the segment, one year perfect attendance. Okay, we move up the ladder now. Congratulations.
We've got two years.
Jessica Cowan.
Good job, Jessica. Thank you very much.
Amanda Kutcher. That's two years perfect attendance. Now we go to three. Lisa Payne. Now we move to four years perfect attendance. Ms. Green. And Ms. Mark. Okay, Ms. Grossman, Maureen Grossman.
Good job, Maureen. Thank you very much.
And Palmer, Mangat. Okay, now we move to five years. Mr. Dean. And last but not least, Shirley Hawley, five years.
Excellent job, Shirley. I hope I didn't leave anybody out. I think that's all that's supposed to show up, but just so that you know, just so that you know, we also have probably another fifty or so people that did receive this award, but were unable to make it tonight, so I want to congratulate all the recipients. Your job well done. Thank you very much.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, you're on the list?
Seventeen.
Okay, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris, you weren't on the list of attendees, but we do have your certificate somewhere in this pile, and we'll get it to you. I apologize.
Now we come to the teachers of the year at the E S Ps, the educational support people and personnel of the year for 2011 and '12. We have fifteen recipients. We have seven teachers and eight E S Ps. What we're going to do this year is that we're going to ask board members to come up, say a little bit about each of the individuals, and we're going to start off with Mr. McEnroe.
I have a distinct honor and privilege to recognize the high school teacher of the year. That's Mr. James Kraft. James? Mr. Kraft is a native of Boise, Idaho, actually been to Boise, Idaho. And he's a graduate of Westminster Choir College, where he studied with renowned metropolitan opera, Mezzo Soprano. He has had the pleasure of performing with some of the world's top orchestras and some of the most prestigious concert stages in the United States, including Carnegie Hall and Avery Fisher Hall. He has also performed on many legendary batons, and not just on a personal note, wherever I go, I see James Kraft, whether it's at a school function, whether it's a fundraiser, whether it's in town, whether it's O L V, he's everywhere, and he gives very unselfishly of his time and his talents to our school community. And it's with much respect and admiration that I have the privilege of presenting teacher of the year certificate to you with recognition. Good job. Thank you very much.
I guess, Mr. Six Years Perfect Attendance, would you like to take a picture at the end?
At the high school. We're going to stay with the high school. Stay with the high school, the educational support professional, paraprofessional, Doreen Ortizio. This is what her peers have said about her, that Mrs. Doreen Ortizio is a passionate and dedicated paraprofessional. Her display of warmth over the many years for her students is characteristic of a true professional. Ms. Ortizio worked tirelessly to assist her student in all academic areas. She's a team player, and many staff members look to her for support. The staff at Savile War Memorial High School, who had the honor of working with her, are very proud to call her the E S P of the year.
Mr. Green.
We're going to go to middle school then.
For the middle school, Mrs. Kraft. Mrs. Kraft worked at Savile War Memorial High School and has been a teacher in Savile for the last twenty-six years. Although she worked at Truman School and Savile Middle School, she can be seen nearly as often in the halls of Savile War Memorial High School, volunteering countless hours to the choir, both as the choir director's wife and as a member of the Savile War Memorial High School's Choral Parents Association, of which she was president for ten years. She has been an active member of the local pop Warner organizations, as well as coaching for years in Savile Athletic Association. She is co-founder of Stardust, a musical theater workshop for kids. She resides in Savile with her husband James and her daughters Caitlin and Kylie. Congratulations.
Good job. See updates, Jim.
Donna Evigan, the E S P of the year at the middle school. Mrs. Evigan has been a professional, paraprofessional in Savile School District for six years, the last four of which have been at the middle school. Mrs. Evigan goes above and beyond when working with her students. She makes sure that they are prepared and on task, encourages them, as well as others in her classes, to participate. She especially encourages those who are shy and lack confidence. If a student is in need of supplies, she's more than willing to provide them with the tools they need to succeed. Mrs. Evigan, on many occasions, has given up her lunch to assist children who are in need of extra help. She encourages all students to push themselves to exceed in the classroom and never lets them take the easy way out. In her loving way, she is able to correct students in a manner that they are able to understand why they're wrong and how they can improve. Mrs. Evigan makes a difference in children's lives and is truly a worthy recipient of E S P of the year. Congratulations.
Okay, we move to Ms. Backo and Samso Upper Elementary School. And Dan.
For the teacher, Carrie O'Neal Fleischner. Ms. Fleischner is a warm and dedicated teacher at the Samso Upper Elementary School. When you walk into her room, you can feel the enthusiasm and compassion she has for her students and education. A talented teacher, she meets the needs of her students and has received many compliments from parents of the students she has taught. Working with students with disabilities, Ms. Fleischner provides a positive environment daily. By providing constant praise and allowing her students to grow, she has helped many students reach their goals. She establishes a good rapport with her students, paraprofessionals, and the teachers she works with. Mrs. O'Neal Fleischner is a team player, and many staff members look to her for her expertise. She is well versed in technology and uses this to her advantage, which keeps her students engaged in learning. The staff of the Samso Upper Elementary School and her students are very proud to have Mrs. O'Neal Fleischner as their teacher of the year.
We've got enough everybody, so Dan's going to jump in.
E S P, paraprofessional, Mary Alice Pearson. Mrs. Mary Alice Pearson is an extraordinary paraprofessional. She shows great compassion for the children and a deep passion for work. Mrs. Pearson is a team player who is willing to provide assistance to other team members in the most professional manner.
We're at Wilson School. Good evening, everyone. The Wilson Teacher of the Year, Carrie Gama. Mrs. Carrie Gama was selected as Teacher of the Year from Wilson Elementary School. She is a true professional, congenial and well-respected by all her colleagues. Her classroom exhibits a safe, nurturing, and orderly learning environment for her students. Without a doubt, Carrie symbolizes good character, teacher effectiveness, and is a wonderful role model for all her peers.
The E S P secretary, Maureen Grossman. Mrs. Maureen Grossman is an extremely dedicated and reliable head secretary at Wilson Elementary School. She always manages to answer all questions and never forgets to take care of anything you ask of her. Whether you call her at the office to tell her you forgot to take hands, you need a parent's phone number, or have a question about upcoming date, she's always there to assist you with her knowledge and support. Thank you.
Go to Truman School then.
We're honoring Ms. Dawn O'Hara. Ms. Dawn O'Hara has enthusiastically taught kindergarten, first and second grades throughout her fifteen years in the Savile Public School District at the Harry S. Truman Elementary School. Ms. O'Hara is admired and appreciated by her colleagues, parents, and principal, and is loved and adored by her students. Ms. O'Hara is a talented teacher who provides an abundance of rich educational experiences to develop her students' skills and interest in learning. She challenges her brightest students to new levels and encourages her struggling students to feel success. She prides herself with setting high expectations for her pupils and makes a difference and positive impact on each youngster that enters her classroom. Ms. O'Hara is passionate about her profession and takes pride in her performance. She brings life to the subject matter as a result of her creative and artful teaching style. Not only does she effectively integrate technology into her daily lessons, she serves as Truman School's "we" assistant. Congratulations to a person most deserving of this great honor. We also have Ms. Suzanne Gala. Ms. Suzanne Gala has done an outstanding job in her role as a paraprofessional for nine years in the Savile School District. During these years, she has assisted special education teachers in K-1 L L D classes and is a valued and respected member of the Harry S. Truman Elementary School team. Dependability, dedication, and skill are the hallmarks of the manner in which Ms. Gala performs her job. She is very knowledgeable in the academic, emotional, and social needs of the students with whom she works. She loves what she does, and it is evident that she has the best interests of the students at heart, from the manner in which she performs her responsibilities. Ms. Gala's talents, support, and devotion are greatly appreciated, and her services make a difference in regard to the success of Truman School. She is most deserving of this honorable award.
Now go to Eisenhower.
The Eisenhower Teacher of the Year is Lori Hershkovitz. Ms. Lori Hershkovitz is more than a teacher to the students in her class. She was someone who makes them laugh, makes them smile, and makes them forget about everything going on and that's wrong in their life. Ms. Hershkovitz has a way of spreading joy to everyone she comes in contact with. Not only does she teach her students their letters and numbers in her kindergarten classroom, but more importantly, she teaches them the important things in life that can't be found in the binding of their books. Former students constantly come back to visit her, and she consistently welcomes them with a huge hug. When looking for a superb educator, one doesn't need to look much further than Lori Hershkovitz. The impact she has on her students and her fellow colleagues is second to none. It is with great pleasure and honor to congratulate Ms. Lori Hershkovitz as the 2011-2012 Eisenhower School Teacher of the Year. Eisenhower E S P paraprofessional, Ms. Barbara Morris. When looking for someone who is going to make a lifelong connection with a student, there is no need to look further than Barbara Morris. Mrs. Morris is a paraprofessional in the Eisenhower Behavioral Disability Classroom. She has the innate ability to connect with the students on a level that other adults simply are not able to do. There is nothing greater than walking into a classroom and immediately seeing the impact one person can have on a room full of students. As students arrive to school with a somber look on their face, she is able to find a way to turn that frown into a smile. I would believe that if you asked Mrs. Morris who won this award, she would not say it was Barbara Morris. She would say it was the students in the classroom, because she is the type of person who believes the impact they leave on her is greater than the impact she could never leave on them. It is our pleasure to congratulate Mrs. Barbara Morris as the 2011-2012 Eisenhower School E S P of the Year.
Now go in to Arleth. Arleth School.
Heather Lacy. Mrs. Heather Lacy has been a teacher at Arleth Elementary since 2000. During these last twelve years, she has demonstrated her abilities in a variety of early childhood settings, and in particular, for the last few years, has been teaching the kindergarten and inclusion class. Mrs. Lacy works daily on implementing the core curriculum content standards and makes sure that all of her students' needs are successfully met on a daily basis. She sets attainable goals for her students to meet and encourages them throughout the day to do their best at meeting those goals. Her teaching style allows each child in her class to be successful. She uses learning centers throughout the day, which are creative and meet the needs of the entire class, as well as individual learners. Mrs. Lacy is truly an exceptional teacher, and Arleth School is indeed most fortunate to have such an educator possessing the qualities embodied by Heather Lacy.
You have two more awards. The Arleth E S P paraprofessional, Anne Marie Manetti. Mrs. Anne Marie Manetti works with the students in Mrs. Garnett's multiple disabled program. Such a program requires the talents and skills of individuals who are exceptional in their dedication, patience, and compassion. Mrs. Manetti is truly a person of such qualities. Throughout her day, Mrs. Manetti multitasks by using her energy and skills to reinforce the individual academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs at the wide-ranging levels of the class. Anne Marie Manetti is always willing to help and goes above and beyond to do whatever Mrs. Garnett and her children need. Mrs. Manetti is a person that all of us can emulate, for she loves her job and is most talented in the performance of such a truly noble service to others. Congratulations. Our next is E S P Transportation, is Barry Anderson. Mr. Barry Anderson steps up to the plate and goes the extra mile when he's needed. He's a great union representative and liaison in changing matters between the union and administration office. Mr. Anderson is a fine, outstanding citizen and very deserving of this honor. The rest.
Let's get the road going around the corner. I just would like to say before closing, this is what it's all about. You know, there's a commercial for one of the companies out there, and they talk about, you know, should it be about supply, should it be about textbooks, should it be about, you know, how do you increase productivity and performance? This is how you do it. Personnel, teachers, that's really what it's all about. Congratulations, and God bless you, and thank you very much.
Do we have to get closer? If somebody could send me pictures, they're all my role of fame. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Everybody should receive a copy of the regular executive session meeting minutes of September fourth, 2012. Anybody have any changes, additions, or deletions in the minutes? Mrs. Backo.
At the last meeting, I had asked for an addition for Senator LaFer to be included in the minutes. You called him a state senator, he's a U.S. senator, so whoever sends it out, just make sure that you address it properly. The other question I have is a more generic one, and I know I brought this up before. Periodically, when you put down questions, when people ask questions, you always put who replies, but you never put what the reply was. I think it's important that we include the reply to the questions and not just the question.
Any other comments on the minutes?
One other.
Okay, one more.
There was also, I had asked for a correction to the previous minutes. It's on page two.
What date? What date and energy you're talking about? Prior to the fourth?
No, I only have one. I only have one. It is the fourth. Okay. On the fourth, I had asked for corrections for the previous minutes, and I can't remember exactly, I think that was about the hit reports.
They were done.
Right. But when you put the que-- could you just include what the corrections are when you put the minutes, because they're missing? Like, you just say there's corrections, but you don't write what the correction is.
Do you want the detail of what?
Well, at least the topic, so that like it's like a rec, you can remember what the topic was.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the five minutes with those recommendations. So long. Roll call, vote, please. Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Vichard.
Yes.
Mr. Brudinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Syaak.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBento.
Yes.
Mrs. Riquilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft.
Yes.
Our student council representative, Tony, what is happening?
This past Friday, the student council organized the annual U V U assembly. This assembly consists of short skits that highlight the different personalities that can be seen throughout the high school, and also encourages freshmen to embrace their individuality and develop a personal sense of identity. The assembly went well, and everybody got into the lineup. Wethmore, Pepperdale's right around the corner, and in compliance with the H I B laws, we have decided to stop selling class colored shirts. Instead, we will opt for a single color for all four classes. This decision was made after Mr. Brown sat down with both student council and class councils, and informed us about the current problem of freshmen being bullied during Pepperdale. By selling a single shirt, it will be harder to target freshmen, and with support of the school's leading figures, we hope to bring down the number of incidents significantly. Of course, selling only one colored shirt may not be the first solution, but since this is the first year we're doing this, we see it as a large step for school units and the prevention of bullying.
The shirt will still say freshman on it?
No.
Mr. McEnroe. When is homecoming?
Homecoming, uh...
Do you know when that is?
No, not yet.
Nineteen? Yes, Mr. Vichard. Just a quick question. Have they scheduled talent night yet for the-- I enjoy very much a talent night. Yeah, they-- The Mariah Show.
Oh, I don't think so. I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Do we have any parent involvement committee representative?
She was unable to attend tonight.
Okay, do you have any update?
She emailed me her report.
Okay.
PIC held its first meeting on September tenth, and there was a great turnout. Dr. Alfano explained the purpose of PIC. Opening day went very smoothly. This year, the district is using Blackboard Connect rather than parent link as our notification system, and a new district website is in the process of being developed. Parents in attendance at the meeting asked about the redistricting decision and voiced their concerns. They were told that many logistics needed to be looked at before anything is set. The board plans to have another public meeting about the update. Parents also asked about transcripts being compatible with the college common application, and parents asked about going paperless to a greater degree. They recommended fewer forms to write in and instead, forms to be filled out online, such as the emergency card. The next meeting has been changed to October eighth, here at the high school media center, and will begin at 6:30. We will have Elise Barone from the Safe Alliance there as a guest speaker, so we hope to see many parents attend. many parents attend. Okay, and we hope to see parents come out to the meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sayah, district highlights, sir.
Thank you. First, I'd like to welcome our administration here. Thank you for coming, and I'd also like to extend a welcome back to Mr. Brown. We're glad to have you back at the Helmand High School. We've already acknowledged the individuals who had perfect attendance who were here tonight. I'm going to read the list on the district highlights of the individuals who were not able to make it tonight, but otherwise have still had perfect attendance in the district. One-year perfect attendance. Patricia Aloysio, Robert Argonides, Elizabeth Borrell de Mayo, Anna Jajrusiak, Shannet Josiah, Michelle Mariello, Lynn Mayer, Jessica Mendon, Ronald Morgan, Jack Moraz, Joseph O'Donnell, Judith Perone, Yolanda Reducha, Laura Remo, Eric Ratam, Joseph Slavik, Jill Sparrow, Jaclyn Sulzer, Edward Zerowski. Two consecutive years' perfect attendance. Carrie Ann Breznoschek, Deborah Glaser, Ronald Twardos, Luigi Vengri. Three consecutive years' perfect attendance. James Coleman, Rachel Galvand, Karen Havens, Margaret Ritter, Kathleen Stricker, John Wojcicki. Five years' perfect attendance. Ben Isabella. Congratulations to all those mentioned. And I apologize for my voice, I'm getting overbooked.
Dr. Alfano, can you take us through your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. A, no report. B, finance. There's number four, a correction on number four. B, it should be $12,922 and one penny, one cent. So, it should be 12922.01. So, that change is there. Eight A should be withdrawn. And 14 should also be withdrawn. One through 12 are our regular resolutions for that. There is a change order, number two, for safety construction, the amount of $24,000 in the middle school roof. Any questions with section B?
Yes. I'm saying item number eight, and I'm going to vote no on check number 12432 on number three.
Check number one?
It's 12432.
382?
Mr. Baupin, who is that check for?
That's for the speaker who spoke at opening. Okay, it's whole.
Mr. DeAndrea, is the latest word agenda online? Because what I'm looking at is a little different than what...
I don't send it out, so I don't know what is actually... It's a little bit. You changed one or two things. Number 14 was added today, so that was the only change I made, and then it actually got withdrawn.
Could we update the portal so that it's...
We'll let them know.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Backo. Go ahead.
There was a transfer on the transfer report for $4,800 from the high school from supplies to equipment. Do you know what it was for?
The specific equipment, I don't know.
You don't know what it was for?
I don't recall, no.
Can you get it for me?
Yeah, in my office, I would have it. Is that to July or August? It's a 4,808?
4,808. It was on the short report. July. And check 124382, I'm going to be voting no.
What is that check for?
Same check.
Which was?
The opening speaker.
What was the other one? Draw the sign, it was another 18 or 19?
14.
Okay, any other questions and answers? Go ahead, Dr. Alfano.
Moving to personnel non-certified, there's a resignation, extension of an unpaid medical leave, a black seal approval, and a couple of substitutes. Any questions with section C? With not moving to D, personnel certified, there's a resignation of a teacher, a retirement, rescind the appointment of another teacher, a resignation of a school psychologist, the return date of an individual to be amended for FMLA, and grant retroactive and unpaid personal leave for FMLA as well. There's also a few pregnancy leaves, and the approval of a suspension. Some corrections on number 10 with salaries, as well as 11 and 12. There's a lateral transfer in number 13, as listed, and there is a parent program in regard to Title I and Title III, and Title II, 12-month FISB stipends as well, which are paid out of those grants. There is a correction, there's a couple extracurriculars that's going to be written on number 17 that should read, "The Vote of Education is requested to approve retroactively $3,500", because these were the additional IPs that were done over the summer. This is just retroactively, the word "retroactively" needs to be added. Salary adjustments, as listed, for credit adjustments, anti-bullying coordinators with Zykner, and then you have the school safety teams that's listed in number 20. 21 or some new employment, the ISS monitor, Diane Hire for the high school, and professional days is listed. 24 is new, I just got that, we need to put that in. We can't, we don't have enough of, this individual was a three-fifths person, worked three days, going to work three and a half, get 70%. Unfortunately, the number of speech evaluations have gone up, and occupational therapist evaluations have gone up, and we need to add some, an additional $2 to our salary, or to 70%. The substitute list is as noted on page 11, number 25. Any questions with D?
Dr. Alfano, we had spoken, actually, we had emailed following the last meeting, there was supposed to be a correction on the agenda regarding the substitutes approving them for 2012, 13?
Yes.
I didn't catch it until Mrs. Backo started asking about the minutes. Could we just have Mr. DeAndrea word the appropriate motion, we can approve it at the end, because I didn't see it on the agenda. Oh, I didn't see it. Is it there?
Non-circuit.
Oh, it's on the non-circuit?
Yes, it's on the non-circuit.
Okay, never mind. Thank you.
You're welcome. E, policy, there's no report. F, curriculum?
Dr. Alfano, I have a question.
Sure.
On number 20, the parents that are listed for the anti-bullying, for each school, are they parents only, or do they also work for the district?
Some, I think some work for the district. Is it any of them? I'm not sure. Doesn't look like it.
I don't know that any of them work for the district.
They're all just strictly, they're parents.
Yeah, I don't recognize any of them.
No, no, as far as I know, I don't recognize any.
I don't recognize any of them. Okay, curriculum, there are no hit reports, but I'm sure the next meeting we'll have a few. The textbook list, basic approval, and special services placements is listed on page 12 and 13. Revision of curriculum, as noted on page 13. Any questions with that section? With not moving to G, co-curriculum, this is similar to the waiver that some students take for transportation to YMCA. Some parents have opted to have their children picked up and brought directly to the YMCA, and parents sign off on that. So, that's kind of a new program. Strength and conditioning is having their third annual student faculty basketball game. Back-to-school Day legislators is Friday, October 26th. Please put that on your calendar, that's always a good day. Truman School PTO Bingo Night is the 15th of March, and the World Language Department, which is really not sponsored by us per se, but they're looking to go to a trip in the summer to Spain, and they're just using it as an informational meeting. Any questions with G?
Yes, for number one, is that in addition to BASK?
Yes, that's not taking the place of BASK. And so, I believe it's only a handful of kids right now. Support services for H, way of transportation is noted. Middlesex, these are the routes as listed, use of a couple of buses in number three and 16, and two field trips on pages 16 and 17 as noted. That concludes my report. Mr. Backo.
Any questions, discussion on the board about the agenda for open up for the public?
Just one question, Mr. Backo. Regarding to the opening day speaker, I'm just wondering what the rationale was for Mrs. Backo or Mr. Baupin for voting no. Was it that we didn't think that that particular speaker was any good, or we just don't want to have a speaker going forward?
Didn't want to have a speaker, the money, it was $3,000, we were fighting over sending people for competition, and we found, have a problem finding money for a speaker for 45 minutes, so...
Got it, okay. Thank you.
That was my excuse.
You mean have a professional?
No, I just, I just wondering, whether it was him personally, or his own. Okay, thanks.
Have we always had a speaker, are we?
No, I was the speaker for the last six years, seven years.
Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and entertain a vote to file an exception to superintendent Ford.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Kevin? Mrs. Bruno?
Mr. Baupin?
Yes, in the private service.
Mr. Backo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Treb?
Yes.
And Mr. Backo.
Yes. Delegate to New Jersey School Boards, so, Mr. Sayah.
The board can look, in this week's school board notes, the association has appointed a new executive director to replace Marie Bill, to succeed Marie Bill, who will be retiring at the end of the year. That person will begin on December 1. I don't want to share the name, because I don't know if that person has given notice to their employer yet at this time, but as I said, this week, you can expect notice. The delegate assembly will be held in November, I will be attending. I'll have information to the board with regard to the resolutions. Also, the National School Boards Association is putting together several pamphlets and informational brochures with regard to the upcoming election, seeking to engage people with regard to making education a priority in the upcoming election debates, especially with regard to the sequestration issue, which the board pressed a resolution on last month, as well as the reauthorizations of the Elementary Secondary Education Act. I am, I was elected by my colleagues as the president of the National School Boards Action Committee, so you will be seeing some of those brochures with the opening letter from me. The letters don't reference Cerebral, but you will see my name on it, so I just wanted to give with words a heads up on that, that you might be seeing that. Other than that, that's it. Mr. Bishada, I believe you have an item that you spoke to me about very briefly?
Yes, Mr. Sayah. The general public's information on the August 30th in the Home News Tribune, there was a editorials, in the editorial section, there was an article written by a gentleman by the name of Carl J. Azoni. What his article is basically about, sitting as a legislator in the House, and both in the Assembly and in the Senate, for the last several years, the bill's number is A-367/S-213. What these bills pertain to is that the state reimbursement of 50% of the school property taxes for seniors 65 and over. As I pointed out to Mr. Sayah, what this bill passage would, it wouldn't have been a great help to many struggling senior homeowners. The refund would come from the casino revenue fund, and not from a community coffers or by penalizing other taxpayers, and not from the state general revenue account. Now, I've asked Mr. Sayah to get a hold of the New Jersey School Board Association, and kind of like, they are a lobby group, I guess you're all aware of, to get this going for seniors, because a lot of people are forced to move out of New Jersey, and you're well aware of, you've been reading articles about how people are doing down in North Carolina, South Carolina, or they're going out west, because they can't afford to stay here. And most of them, their families are still here, and I think this bill would, at least, they do it in Georgia, they cut your property taxes once you're 65, to 50% of what they are, your school taxes, and then at 70, they lower your property taxes by a half, to keep people there, because they don't want to uproot people because they can't afford to stay. So, I've asked Mr. Sayah to go to the New Jersey School Board Association again, and lobby, to get their input, to go and push our assembly, and get our governor's butt in gear, to do something about it also. By the way, our governor, for anyone that wants to, tomorrow morning, he will be in South End Way at the YMCA, I got a phone call about 10 after 6:00, having a town hall meeting. I don't know if I can make it, but if I do go there, I will push this and a couple other issues that I have. That's about it.
Okay, I will check that out, and I'll report back at the next meeting, Mr. Bishada.
The Middlesex County School Boards meeting is this Sunday?
October 4th.
October 4th. And it's here, if you want to attend, you need to register through the board secretary's office.
We're all registered already.
Okay.
I registered.
And on Saturday, Mrs. Treb and I are going to Monroe for some advanced bargaining, negotiation training, on the Saturday, sponsored by New Jersey School Board, and we're registered to do that, so... Okay, any committee reports, any committee between last meeting today? Seeing none? Any...
I'm sorry. We're talking about PIC? Not that, I'm sorry. About Cerebral Day? Sure. Okay. So, I would, I would like to first thank all the board members who donated candy, and administration that donated candy, and hand out to the children and families, as well as the donated frisbees by East Coast Customs, which is on Main Street, and that was, it was such, it was a beautiful gift that he gave, and I just really appreciate it, and I wanted to put that, that shout out, but thank you to East Coast Customs on Main Street. Bye. Thank you.
Mr. President, if we haven't already, can the board send a thank you letter to East Coast Customs?
Of course.
For the superintendent, or for the...
Of course.
Mrs. Minister.
Sure. And Mr. Pinto, if you can pass the information, you know, address, find the contacts, so that he'll be willing to donate next year. Okay. Any discussion, any topics for discussion before I open up for the public?
Mr. Backo? Mrs. Bruno?
A couple of years ago, we talked about having online payments for lunch for parents to pay their lunch accounts. I believe that there was a fee associated with it, and the board decided not to pursue that, and I was wondering if we might reconsider that again, for payments for lunch and other activities, to avoid cash and checks, and where we can just log on and pay our bills.
This is the day makes to do those types of things. When we talked about it last time, did we have the infrastructure to support that?
Yes, we did.
So, does it matter, is there a fee for the parents that, is there a transaction fee? Is that what it is?
It became, it was the board's choice to be a fee to the parents, or the board, or the board bears the cost of that fee.
What was the fee percentage? Do you know what it is?
If I remember correctly, it might have been a half a percent of every transaction. Another company charged flat rate per transaction, so it depended on you.
You mean the transaction means depositing, let's say $20 into an account is a half percent?
Some did a flat fee, so it made more sense. If you put $100, you only paid a dollar, but if you paid $10, it still was the same dollar, so... Each company had a different way of doing it. We would definitely have to find someone that would work with our common internal system that we have.
Could you give us a ballpark back of the envelope estimate off the top of your head as to how much that would cost us annually?
I think the, if I recall correctly, it might have been, the initial setup might have been about $30,000 because of the equipment needed, and certain types of registers, if I recall correctly, and then even an annual fee of probably around $5.
So, we would be paying? Well, what made me think of it was in my district, we were collecting for trips, and the parents can't write out checks, they have to write out money orders, and just the thought of having, I don't have the time to go buy a money order. If I had to send my child on the trip to do a money order, it would be a problem, and then to add that fee to it, on top of it, I just, I'd rather just go online and pay for it. So, I know that we had discussed it once before, we decided not to, but I thought that it might be time to discuss it again.
Be something to bring up to the director of food services on, you know, what she thinks the use of that would be. Now, the kids would have to swipe something, wouldn't it be to deduct your account? Do you have to have swipers?
I believe that was part of the whole process. They get a special PIN number, a swipe card and things of that nature. I think of the company that we're moving diligently forward with, I think it was, every kid had a PIN number.
Right.
I think it was going to be basically their student ID number.
Right, the system I seen in the kid's picture comes up on the screen, and the person can verify that. Does anybody have any concern about...
Does anybody have any, any concern about research and that, to see how feasible it is to do it?
Research, sure. You have to talk to Adam, maybe?
Absolutely.
Okay, but I'd like to get Shelley's input on that, too, as far as.
Well, I can tell you Shelley's, I can, Shelley was in full support of it four years ago. It saved so much problems, especially at the larger buildings, with IOUs, and kids that didn't have money.
And it would cost, but we're thinking it would cost the Board at least thirty thousand dollars.
I believe that's the number, don't hold me to it, I'm going off my head from three or four years ago.
That would be something that we could fund out of cafeteria account, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then raise prices.
Well, I mean, I think that we have been generating a slight surplus in that account. We might have to work out a funding plan whereby we don't pay for it in all one lump sum?
You can, we have to retain our institute fees for it.
Okay, perhaps at the next meeting we'll give some more information.
If, that's two weeks away, I'm not sure.
Well, second meeting.
I'll do my best to get it back.
Okay. Now, Mr. Bishad, you had something?
Yes, Mr. McEnroe. What happened, it's several days, I was walking around, and I had several parents approach me about this redistricting issue. One of the issues that propped up, and one parent was very concerned, was the reopening of Samson, instead of doing a K through five redistricting, is, what's going on with this, you know? There's rumors. Slower, I'm sorry, slower. You know, there's concern, you know, what are we doing?
What's the concern? The slower is gonna be utilized as a school, whether it's gonna be in a K-three configuration, or a K-five configuration, it's still yet to be discussed, but it's, it's a, it's in our inventory as a building, we'll put money into it, as you know, we've already got the wireless terminals in, we're doing the heater ventilator systems. Then eventually it's gonna be used as a school.
Correct.
The serve, the serve the Morgan community, and that's where we are right now.
But is that, is that going, the concern with one of the parents was, is that, are we going to utilize Samson before we open up Slough? That was their question.
We are utilizing.
Utilize. No, I'm saying from a K-two-five, that was the, what the parents.
Well, again, that decision hasn't been determined, whether Samson's gonna stay a K-two-five, I mean, a four-five, and that's over the line, to further discuss that and research that.
Okay, the committee is going to report, claim a future on?
So we're gonna, one of the things I had on my list out, and I'll do that tomorrow, give Dr. Alfano about schedule meeting, that we can close out, we are ready out with the redistricting. I was suggesting, Mrs. Bauck had made about a meeting ago, about having a public meeting to update. Anybody else?
I just have a, it's a policy committee question. We discussed a long time about not, we were not going to have a policy on competence now, and we're not gonna do one, about trips. Are we going to, the committee going on the rendition of, are both going to have a policy either?
I mean, the Board didn't give a definitive direction. I, I think the best bet would be before the policy can go sort for another twelve hours on a policy that can't reach consensus on. Perhaps Dr. Alfano would know as easy working as with his administrative team, could simply come up with procedures that you're utilizing now, through your team to value, trips should be funded, and we're not talking competition, trips.